Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for the people, and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the February 4th regular meeting minutes. Any discussion on that? Motion second. All those in favor to approve the February 4th meeting minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Next, we have the approval of the February 12th meeting minutes. Any discussion on those?
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. We had no... No CPSE, right? Okay, next on the agenda, we have the approval of the CSE CPSE recommendations. There's no reports this month. Go by.
Need a motion on that?
Yep.
I'll do it.
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. And finally, we are up to public comment. Do we have any public comment tonight? We have two in the crowd tonight, so... But no public comment? Okay, we'll move to discussion items. First discussion item, Finance Committee will meet tomorrow night at 5:00 PM. Dick Demond was on that committee with his passing. I'll step in as the alternate. You guys are good with that. I'll get up to speed with that to cover it. So I'll be there tomorrow night at 5:00 PM with you to join you. The community budget survey is out. Kevin, you haven't discussed it at all?
Just that I know that Meg wants to get that out. She sent us the version from last year, and I provided some comments on that, basically taking what we had last year and just building off of it, including some of those specific questions, you know, that we've already discussed as potential funding issues with the SRO and looking ahead to next year with the grant experiment for the social workers. So I don't know if we want to have a discussion on that right now, if anybody has any input or, you know, can provide it by tomorrow. That would be great, because if we can move forward and get that published, then we can start getting feedback from the community and get that incorporated into the budget process.
Is that a live link to be able to track?
Yes.
If we may comment on that. So if everybody can before... We'd like to have it if we can before tomorrow night's meeting. So if you get a chance tonight or tomorrow, put any of your comments to that, pretty please. And we will review that tomorrow night at the Finance Committee. And then, when was Meg looking to have that published and out?
She wanted it out this week, as she said, so...
My take was like right after the meeting tomorrow night to make the last bit to it and then put it out. So it would be out tomorrow's Wednesday.
Tomorrow's Wednesday.
Yeah, last month week already. Yes, so I'd say...
And as we have, just to make a point, in the last few years when we started doing this, we started, after we sent it out, we'd hit the results sheet, and we'd send the link of the results sheet, the spreadsheet, directly to all board members. So you will see your feedback coming in live. So if anything that filters through the admin or anything, it comes directly to you. I think it's important to comment on that.
Yeah, it's been very beneficial to see all those comments lifetime. Okay, so tomorrow, if you can, before 5:00, please. We have a board budget workshop on Wednesday, February 26th at 6:00 PM. That's going to be here in the boardroom. That's open to all general public. Administrators will be here as well. Our Policy Committee will need to meet. We're proposing either Tuesday, February 25th at 5:00, or Thursday, the 27th at 5:00 PM. If either of those dates...
I can't do the 27th.
Okay.
27th was better for me.
I could look out into the beginning of March. Okay.
Do you want to do the 5th? That's Wednesday after our board meeting next Tuesday. The board is on the 4th.
It's open for me.
It's kind of like an auction. The dates go quick.
It's open for me right now, the 5th. Okay.
It's open on our calendars.
Try that? Okay.
So Wednesday, March 5th at 5:00.
Yes, please. And just a reminder, we'll have our Community Budget Forum at 7:00 PM. That follows our regular business meeting at 6:00 PM on March 4th. So that one's open again to the general public, and that's the building of our budget for next year.
And that will be livestreamed as well.
Okay, so we will have a livestream linked to that as well. Next, Mr. Verweer, add to your seat.
So two items I wanted to talk about, and these were actually, these came out on this Friday, I think. There was an advocacy letter that came out. It was in the Friday letter. There's a... On this February 7th, I attended the Virtual Capital Conference. Mike, I don't know, did you? As well, so there's a link out there now where you can watch that if you would like to. It's about four hours of time to watch it. If you had to look at one thing, I would recommend you take a look at the Executive Budget Summary, which Nisbet put out, just a PDF, has all the latest numbers, increases from last year's, and kind of what wasn't included in the executive budget as well. They also put out a link to their Take Action Letter, which we did one last year for folks around the board. Obviously, last year was more of a push because of the issues with the Foundation Aid, you know, potential reductions. But I personally feel like we should still continue to put out these letters annually and hit on the topics that are important to the district. Obviously, the school, the electric bus continues to be an issue for us. Foundation Aid, state aid will continue to be an issue. One thing they also linked was the, there's a comparison worksheet that they put out, with Excel spreadsheet, which looks at the two metrics that they changed in the Foundation Aid formula. Looks at them compared to last year, the metrics that were... that were used. And I looked at just surrounding districts, and we were the one district that had both in the positive and significant increases for our district. So I think including these two metrics now, we're switching them out, is actually an improvement for our district. And there's one thing that I would like to highlight in the letter, that these changes we're starting to see in the Foundation Aid formula are already proving positive for our district. So just kind of wanted to have a general discussion if folks were on board with putting a letter together and then...
So how many topics do we want to try to take on with that letter?
If you look at their template, they have like 15.
Well, they do. Their suggested templates...
What do we want to limit it to?
Do, we have a one pager that you reviewed from the slate of when we met with Senator Oberhacher.
Yep.
Something, Senator?
Senator, yep.
What if we did a cover letter on top of that? In our brochure that we updated, use the same packet?
Could do that.
I mean, they put out a template to assist us. Doesn't mean we have to follow their template. And they give us items because, to assist with the items, but we just did the work. So we could do that, and then in the cover letter, you could hit on the foundation formula and the changes to highlight that, and then have that attached to the second page. And we could even send that to Oberhacher again, I don't... So we can hear everybody consistently. You want to do that?
Yeah, it sounds like a good plan.
Sound like a plan to everybody? Because you've already seen those documents. Okay, we can work on that.
Just in terms of the timing is they recommend, you know, getting it out in the next few weeks, obviously because they're having these discussions at the Capitol about the funding, so... We have it out in a week.
It won't take this long. If you have thoughts on how you want to, you know, your thoughts on capturing that for the cover letter? Do you want to send it over to Cory and I, and we'll put together a draft and send it around for review?
Sounds good.
Yep, that's an easy lift.
Good. Okay, anyone else have any other discussion items? Okay. Thank you, Cory. So as everyone knows, our fellow board member, Dick Demond, unexpectedly passed away on January 28th. Out of respect for Dick's memory and his service to this board, I would propose that we do not consider filling his vacancy by appointment prior to the special election. And his term was up for reelection this May. So I suggest we leave it vacant until the vote in May, and I hope everybody on around the table would support that. I think that with the vote coming forward, the person probably will talk to Wendy, but the highest vote count would actually fulfill his position, starting right after the election. So they would not wait until the July 1st timeframe to start. That person would actually be, he or she would actually be appointed, the highest vote getter, to his position to start effectively immediately right after the election. So that's up to the board, obviously. Normally, for within 90 days of, you know, a special election, you kind of have that flexibility to fill or not fill. It's up to us whether we want to do that. But I think out of respect for Dick Demond and his passing unexpectedly, I think we just leave that open to be filled by the voters by highest vote count.
I'd make a motion in that order, if you'd like.
I'd take a motion on that.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion on that around the table?
Not on Mr. Demond, but I'll give you the heads up that I won't be seeking a second or fourth term, whatever it is. I won't be looking to run in May. How's that? That makes sense?
So we'll have a couple vacancies on the board, so everyone get out there and discuss it amongst the community and see if we can get a few different board members. I know we had special spots to fill. Nate stepped up. We had quite a few people interested in that. So hopefully, everyone's interested in running this spring. And we'll update that as we get closer as to what needs to be filled out and the timing of applications, things like that that need to be turned in to Cory, and we'll update those in the next meetings. So back to that motion. We have a motion second to fulfill that, as I read. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carry. That's how we're going to do that.
If I could, I'd like to make one more comment.
Oh, you hold on.
Okay.
You already said you're not going to go for a fourth term, Kevin. I want to say that I've appreciated your time on the board, and 12 years is a long time to think about. So I, we completely understand that, and thank you for the solid nine you put in on the board. And hopefully, you have a lot of friends that are just like you that want to step up and help us out, you know? It's an important role. I know it's voluntary and thankless at times, but a very important role, and you've done an excellent job in it, so thank you.
Well, thank you.
All yours.
And I just wanted to comment too, that the board has been great to work with, and my decision took off. It's honestly taken me quite a bit of thought, because we have some wonderful projects going on. We've got a great staff. We've done some good things. But it's just, it's honestly, it's time for me to, I feel, just to move on, let somebody else sit in that seat and a new vision come in. If there's anything I can offer to help the school with or whatever, I'd be, as long as it didn't inquire a term, I would be game to have that conversation anyway, so...
I'm hearing Facilities Committee. That's what I'm hearing. Project Development.
Project Development pointed.
Expertise.
I would give that serious consideration, because like you say, we've done a lot of good things, I think. We're on a good track, and like you say, the board's been good to work with. I don't want to come across that there's a problem or any of that nature. It's just, it's... Appreciate all of yous. It's just, it's, I think, my time.
All right, so with them... Go ahead.
I was going to have one thing, just looking at the date for the petitions for those two positions. It's April 21st, and I know that does come up really quickly, almost through February, so...
Yep.
Petitions are generally available with the first legal notice, so that would be the beginning of April.
Last year, for the first time, we did some advertisement. I would, I would think this year it's even more important with multiple positions. So is it the board's agreement for us to go forward with doing some advertisements for the board vacancies, reporter, sign, online?
Absolutely. Okay, no doubt.
All right, we'll plan that out.
Okay, any other discussion items? If not, we are up to the Strategic Plan Progress Report Update Presentation.
More of a discussion. We have our three principals here to provide highlights and take any questions. As you know, I think I explained this the last quarter when we did the first quarterly reports. This is in a little bit of a different format than the past. We put it in an action template Word document, so it gets very extensive. I think it was seven pages for each in the first quarter. Now it's probably up over 10, some of them. But we wanted to capture in a working document all the actions and processes that are going on for your understanding and for your knowledge. So with that said, what's the... Who would like to go first over here? There you go.
So at Townsend, our first goal was to increase attendance for our students. Our action step was to provide families with family resources at different events through the backpack. So if you look at our February update, we have continued to do this. We had our first math night where we had our social worker and counselor there providing resources to families. We have backpacked homes and letters to educate the community on why attendance is important, what are some reasons to come to school, why not to come to school. We also, we're in the process of holding attendance meetings with parents, which actually have been very fulfilling to sit down and have a conversation with the parents to see how we could support them in getting their child to school and the resources that they need. So that's going very well. We also completed our survey on why students are absent and why they're present from the student view. So we are now kind of analyzing that data and looking to put that together into some chart data for you guys. We've also had several incentives that we've been putting in place, such as Warrior Bucks for attendance. So each quarter, instead of looking at the whole year, we've been giving these incentives to the students each quarter so they could go to our Warrior Wagon, which they get very excited about, and they could use their dollars to purchase different things. So just something fun for the kids and to motivate them. You can also see there, they have ice cream parties. We just implemented a PJ day for after break to see if that helps with getting kids to come to school. After break is over, that first day is a tough day for kids to get back into routine. So come in your PJs, come as you are, which is really great. Our teachers have been jumping on board with parent emails and phone calls to increase attendance. I have a little snapshot of where we are as far as our data. Last year at this time, we had 105 students that had 10 or more absent days. This year, we're looking at 81. So there is some growth there, so this work is paying off. So kudos to the committee and the teachers for everything they've been doing. Our next one is fostering positive relationships. We've been doing a lot of work with Alyssa Andre from Effective School Solutions. She's been working with our fifth grade teachers on restorative circles. She's also been working, which is really just repairing the harm and getting support from a group to work through their problems. At the younger grades, it's called the nurtured heart, because they're younger. So you're focusing on the positive to help the kids get through, again, tough days. Our fourth grade's been working with Sweethearts and Heroes. So every grade level is basically doing the same thing in just a different way and a different group to support them. Looking ahead at our next faculty meeting, which is next week, our fifth grade teachers, I'm pointing over there because she's sitting there, have recruited some of our students that's going to come to our faculty meeting. They're going to do a circle with Ms. Van Heeren, Ms. Reinhardt, and Ms. Ogden and Ms. Maxwell to show the staff the student response. So they're doing it, but let's hear from the students. So they're going to do a panel and talk with the teachers about the pros and the cons and how it helps them. So that's going to be really exciting for everybody that's involved. Our next goal was to increase the efficiency of Tier 1 and Tier 2. So if you look at that, our first action step was to conduct the data dig. They have been pulling data galore. It's a little overwhelming how much data the committee has been pulling, but they're doing a really great job. We are looking at our AIS students and comparing to how they're doing with our screeners, our New York State Assessment, and then really drilling down to the different demographics. So we've got lots and lots of information coming, so that's really great. The next action step there was researching the four-week model. Our OT that was spearheading this has unfortunately resigned, and she's moving on to the next part of her career. So we are going to put this action step on hold until we get a new OT, and she gets set up and ready to go. Our next action step there was to discuss at all levels Tier 1 and Tier 2 strategies. Each grade level has kind of looked at this differently. But they are looking at different strategies to scaffold the instruction. So what that looks like is they're identifying gaps in the curriculum, and they're looking at the assessments to say, what else do we need to put in that isn't there to help the kids be successful, which is really great. For RTI, we're working with DCML Bosse's. We have Kristi Newell that joins us and gives us suggestions for improvement for our students, which is going very well. We have a conference coming up with Mike Maddos. Where a team of us are going to go up to Albany and see how we can improve our process, which is really great. And lastly, our special area teachers are even jumping in and enhancing their curriculum. So just recently, I don't know if you've heard, but we had the Olympian come in, and the kids were rowing, and they were just so excited to get on those machines. And, you know, now they want me to get a weight room for them with lots of machines. So I said, oh, boy. But it just shows the kids are getting excited to be there, and they're involved in it, so that's really great. Our last goal was analyze the school environment to focus on, excuse me, parent and student engagement. This is, kind of goes with the earlier action step where we conducted the survey that is done. We, again, are analyzing that, so that's moving along. Our next one was utilizing the Southern Tier Independence Center and Family Resources. At this time, there was no progress with that because we've been focusing on the other goals. And the last one is, again, fostering positive relationships, which was stated earlier in my presentation. Anybody have any questions?
Lot going on.
Great.
There's a lot going on.
Yes.
Clearing none. Next.
Our first goal, to improve communication between the middle, school, and home. We're consistently doing that for one area where we have to, it's been more of a task than I anticipated, is getting the live documents on a website as far as the class outlines and all that kind of stuff. So we'll get there, but it's looking more like beginning of next school year we'll have it in place as opposed to mid-year this year. We've sent out our parent dooms letter. Sent it out via school messenger via email, and then I have a middle school principal Instagram page that I posted on, and it's also included in your, my board report. Every five weeks, when we send out our progress reports and our report cards, we put different information in there. One was helping parents understand what's quote-unquote "normal adolescent behavior." It's easy for me to see what normal middle school behavior is being around 185 of them every day. But if you just have one in your house and it's your first middle schooler, there's a lot of interesting things that you may not think is normal at that age that kids... We also, the most recent one we sent out with our report card was different ways to help parents monitor technology and cell phone usage. A huge thing that goes to middle and high school, I think, you deal with all the time. Our second goal was to train staff to the system, use School Tool, and assist parents in understanding how to effectively use School Tool. On the School Tool, grade book changed on the beginning of this year. Our teachers are to the point now where, it wasn't a huge change, but it was enough that they needed a little while to get used to it. So we're to the point now where we can start looking at those specific things and make it universal. So if, you know, you're looking at your child's English grade on School Tool, you know, then an E means excused, and that E is going to be the same thing in Social Studies or whatever. So it's consistent across the board. Our third goal is to increase engagement and SEL activities throughout the year. We've made a, continue with a great deal of progress with this. We have a group of, call themselves the Wellness Warriors, run by Mrs. Button and Mrs. Granger and Ms. Fowler also. And they, basically, the kids come up with ideas to kind of really help with morale of both the students and staff. They helped us plan our wellness days. We had our second one on February 7th. A part of that was the circles right now. Our sixth and seventh grade teachers have been trained pretty in depth on how to run circles. Our eighth grade teachers were actually working with Sweethearts and Heroes on February 6th, which turned into Snow Day, so that got pushed back. So on February 7th, we pushed into those classrooms to help some of our teachers who weren't fully comfortable with the process. We also did a... We're moving into the Everyday Speech. We're working with a... Can't remember the name of the program now, but it's Sweethearts and Heroes. By them coming in, we have access to it. And now that we have access to Everyday Speech... to it. And now that we have access to Everyday Speech, which is used in the elementary school, we piloted it last year in the spring. We're starting back up with that. It's pretty cool. I can go on and see where the teachers are. There's all sorts of different lessons based on the needs of the students. It's pretty cool. We have our SEL meetings, committee meetings, monthly. Missed January there. I don't remember why, but every other month we've had one. And then we just finished, on January 6th, we did our school climate survey. It was completed by students. Got every single student to complete it. A lot of really good information, allowing us to kind of target certain areas and really come up with some steps. Myself, Mrs. Button, Mrs. Hoffman, Rebecca Roberts from Bosse's, we've met and talked about ways we can use that data. You know, data's great, but if you don't use the data to do anything worthwhile, it's pointless. So we're trying to make sure that the data we have gets used or something. We had a time scheduled for, to meet and talk about it. It's actually the end of last week, and that actually, time got pushed back. So we do have an online calendar to meet and go over the next steps and put some things in place. So, you know, pulling in some, potentially some high schoolers to help us with some stuff. So we made pretty good progress on most of our areas. There's a few where we knew going into it was going to be difficult, and screw it, be true.
Nice.
Any questions?
Nice.
Lot of movement.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so high school highlights. Our first goal was also to increase our attendance. Our first action was to investigate barriers to attendance since the last recording session. In mid-December, we also sent out our climate survey. That was mostly SEL and attendance-related questions. We did get about, a little bit over three-quarters of the high school students to respond to this. So we also have a lot of new data that we haven't seen before at our fingertips that we're already starting to use to look at, all right, these students didn't respond the way that we would anticipate, or they scored very low on something. These are students that need some attention right away. Or we can start, when we have our bi-weekly attendance meetings, if we know that the student scored low on the attendance questions, we already have them up on a radar for, you know, as a way to, when we scan that list, students to watch out for and students to plan for intervening. Our second action step was to increase attendance awareness outreach. You will see at the very bottom of my report is a copy of something that we did send out in one of the last marking period report cards, just to wait for parents to know when it is okay to send students to school when they're not feeling the best. That's something that came from, excuse me, our health office and our school social worker. Amidst the wave of sickness we got, we thought that was important to send out. We have also continued to incentivize students with our ice cream sundaes for students to have high attendance. That does put us in alignment with our attendance policy. And we also are constantly working with the Bosse's Instructional Support Service team. They have done a fantastic job throughout almost every component of this strategic planning goal. But with the attendance piece, they're supporting the things that we already do, and they're just kind of making them more robust and making sure that we have really easy ways to follow through. And just comparing Semester One of last year to Semester Two of this year, we have more students in the high school this year, just because of the number of those students in the classes that come up. We are, we have over 300 less absences this year for all of our kids. And the other side, the other way to look at that is our average daily attendance is up by over seven students. So the data is showing that the things that we are doing is working. And that's a promising start at the, you know, I guess a promising check at midpoint of the year. Goal two was to analyze the school environment, identifying opportunities to increase student and parent engagement. My building leadership team at the high school has really been spearheading this for me because that's when we get Bosse's support to attend those meetings, and that's when we hash a lot of decisions out. Unfortunately, just due to the end of the semester, Regents Week, a lot of those students, or I'm sorry, a lot of those teachers are tied into Regents' review sessions. That team has struggled to meet. We do plan to meet, like this break, for instance, was when we were supposed to meet, and now they can't. But we are scheduled to meet in March to get back on track, meeting and attacking that goal. We do have the January Regents data already. We are, and I will talk about that more in my leadership report, but that January Regents data is also a really nice time to check and look to see how we're doing in certain subject areas. Right away, we noticed some things that we're already putting some steps into place with the Bosse's team to evaluate what happened, evaluate the curriculum, et cetera, things like that. So that's how we're attacking that one right there. The other action step was to investigate opportunities for academic support and success during the school day. This is ongoing. I didn't feel like it was appropriate to add any other updates after that. I mean, this is something we're constantly trying to do. We want to make sure our program fits our kids. We don't want to try and squeeze our kids in a certain type of program. So we're always trying to adjust our flexibility, the things that we're offering our kids. Goal, Objective Three, establish a stakeholder group to assess, review, and analyze the components and vision of the Walton O'Neill High School Portrait of a Graduate. This is something that honestly, honestly, I've been delaying a little bit. I was hoping for a little bit more sure thing of guidance coming down from New York State Education Department. At this point, we don't have anything that's sure. This is all just, this is what we want to do. Nothing's final yet. So that in and of itself is frustrating. We don't have any solid information to make decisions off of, but we're still going to go ahead and try and do this work. We went to a webinar, when I say we, it was myself and my two counselors, went to a webinar on Thursday of last week. There are a lot of questions, a lot of unknowns that are still out there in order for us to actually move on these things. You know, some concerns that we have, the School Tools, the Student Information System, School Tool, is that up to speed on kicking out a workable transcript that these students can use, that we can use, colleges can use after they exit our school? That's a big unknown. A lot of questions about special education students. So there's a lot of things like that that I just don't have answers to. But we do have a list generated of folks in the high school who are interested in being a part of this task to see what a portrait of a graduate would look like here in Walton. And we're going to start, really just common sense, we're going to take our course catalog, see where it would fit in the different seals that are out there for this portrait of a graduate. And in the meantime, we're just going to continue to monitor and hopefully get some guidance so that we can make some decisions. I have the process linked in there, some documents. We're still going to follow that. The first time we meet is going to be with just staff, and then after they have that first staff meeting, I want to pull in outside folks from the community, parents, et cetera, just to make sure that we have a really good representation of what folks want out of the Portrait of a Graduate at the high school level. And that's it. Any questions?
Eric, could I ask what the webinar was? What was that?
Sure. So it was put on by ONC Bosse's. It was, folks from all over the state were there. I got put into a group of folks, Norwich, Oneonta, and we were, it was structured where you got kicked out into breakout rooms, and then your breakout room had a task to basically come up with these questions, or come up with the answers to some of the questions that were being presented. Amongst ourselves in those breakout rooms is where we would have a lot of those concerns pop up. A really big concern is equity. How are you equitably going to be able to say that a student who transfers into our district, let's say from a bigger district, that has all these opportunities that are going to fit in their Portrait of a Graduate, how are they suddenly going to be on the same page if they come to a smaller district that does not have those same opportunities for them to take advantage of, to put onto their seal? A lot of things like that, just people don't know. And we need those answers to make those sorts of decisions.
It's coming quick.
What's that?
It's coming quick, too. It's like three years, right? It'll be the first cohort, I think, that...
Right.
Yep.
Yeah. There'll be a lot of information coming fast and furious once they make their decision and move. If you notice that all three buildings have done a climate survey, at some point here, once they get their data done, my intent is that we will put together a report, just the climate survey, each building, together with one report, including anything that they have identified within the climate survey and any action steps that may have already been identified coming off of it, but at least the data. Because that's, that's data that, honestly, it's data that the board has talked about for a couple of years. So we certainly don't want to lose sight of giving you a clean viewpoint of the climate survey, which is very important for the board to see. So that'll be coming. Okay? We'll move that outside of, so it's standalone, on its own, to come forward.
Can I ask? Because one thing that's kind of struck me with this update and previous updates is that the Bosse Support Services is really helping across the board.
Correct.
Is that something that is part of the targeted district, or that...
Correct.
So that's not something that's funded to continue into the future?
We have, in our Bosse's budget with the ISS group, the Instructional Support Services, we get five days a year. Beyond that, you have to purchase additional days at eight-hundred and some dollars a day. With our Target Review this year, we took our majority of our grant and funded, I think, 50, 45, I forget how many days we ended up with. We maximized our Bosse's work, but we did it from the, from the back and forward. It's what do they need? Teams got together, and how many days do they need? And then we maximized it out. So no, it's a full-court press from that Targeted Review grant. Next year, we will certainly, the administrators are going to feel the loss of having that support last year without a doubt, but they'll have five days that they'll have to arm wrestle over and as they have in the past. Melanie usually wins for some reason, but that's what's happened the last couple of years anyway. So we'll see what happens. Now, again, that, that depends on year two. We don't know. Target Review is two years regardless of result. I don't know if any funding comes with that second year or not because I haven't seen it anywhere in writing, and typically, we should know here soon. And the results will be coming shortly as, as solidified as far as ESSA. But I will tell you, from the preliminary results, which I held off, I wasn't going to say anything until we got it, but I know it's not going to change. And remember, this is a year behind of data. So this is off of last year's data. But if you recall, I gave kind of a red flag moment last year and said we had two different subgroups at middle school that were looking at the tag and doo-doo. That's all gone. The only thing that we have left is year two of Targeted Review. This entire district is LSI. So we had a group flagged in the elementary school that was possibly going to be there. We had the two in the middle schools possibly going to be there. From two years ago data, last year's data, we scored or grew enough that we're now LSI. And that's an achievement. And all, you know, well, sorry, Eric, you're out of this one. These two should be proud of. Eric, you're off the hook on this one. Sorry, buddy. So when I get that, you know, when I get that report sortified, I'll provide that report as well as you can see it. But that's, that's from the preliminary data, which is not, I looked at it, it's not going to change from, from the preliminary to the final. So that's some really good news. But hopefully, we're on the Targeted Review. We've done the work, and hopefully, we'll have another, a second year of funding, and we can tag the strategic plan and get as much support for year two as possible and go forward from there. But I'll share those, that data and information as it comes. So.
Okay. Okay. We are now up to correspondence?
We do not have anything.
And additions to the agenda?
We have one addition to the agenda. It is the only new business item. That will be item number nine A, Personnel Appointment for the Superintendent of Schools, beginning July of '25. And I will let Mr. Dutcher speak to that when we get there.
Okay. Okay, we are up to consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull any of the consent agendas and/or discuss any individual pieces of the consent agenda? The only thing I want to bring to everyone's attention is congratulations to Nancy Howard for almost 30 years in the district on her retirement. We like to highlight those retirements as we can, but lately, it seems like we've been highlighting a lot of retirements. Too many, so.
Can I just highlight something?
Go ahead.
In the financial reports, there's a new report in there?
Correct.
That has the projections through the end of the year. So that's one that Meg's been working on through the finance committees.
I can't wait to see that tomorrow. We looked at that a little bit, and I started having some questions on that, so I can't wait to get that. And if anybody wants, I think one thing we can talk about tomorrow is if there's any kind of training or updates on, if anybody needs it for how to read it effectively and anything like that, we should, we should talk about that as just a, a board session real quick to bring everybody up to speed. It is a new report, but it's going to be important.
And we did share with, with Meg, your, the request from you and Tammy for some additional information. So if you'll note in the administrative contact below, she has added some additional information on that in the report for your assistance. Okay?
Anyone else have any other discussion on the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Second.
Motion second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Now, up to new business. We have the appointment of, be resolved at the Board of Education hereby appoints Teresa Glavin as Superintendent of Schools for the Walton Central School District effective July 1st, 2025, and authorizes the President of the Board to execute an agreement with Ms. Glavin, setting forth the terms and conditions of her employment for the period commencing July 1, 2025, and terminating June 30th, 2029 with an annual salary of $165,000. Any discussion on that new item?
I'd like to motion.
Second.
Motion second to appoint Teresa Glavin as our Superintendent of Schools. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is carried. Congratulations. Would you like to come up and say any words?
I'm going to stand right here.
I don't know. It depends on if you can reach the gifts that have sent your way.
Oh, I agree.
Yes, he's wrong.
Oh, yeah. No, I just, I'll stand right here for a second. I just want to say thank you so much. I'm really excited about this. I'm really excited to work on the high school team, the staff, the teachers. So I'm excited to see that. I'm really, this has been an incredible opportunity that I've been handed, and I promise I won't lay it down. That's my, my commitment to you guys. So I really appreciate the opportunity, and I hope I do well, my guys. Thank you. Thank you. All right, I'll get the gifts in a second. Electrified. Yes, you're welcome. Thank you so much. I'll work my way around. All right. Thank you so much. I know you were, you're going to be helping.
Welcome.
All right, I'm going to sit right behind you.
Thank you for everything. I'll come to you.
Yes. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, we are up to policy review. Mr. Verweer?
As part of our annual policy review, please review the following. 4600 Counseling and Guidance Programs, 8635 Information and Data Privacy, Security Breach and Notification.
Okay, and we have the adoption of the second, adoption of the 8130, the School Safety Plans and Teams. It's our second reading. So...
May I say something?
Absolutely. Go ahead, Cory.
That was my mistake. I brought it forward at the last meeting, and we were a few digits short of our required public comment. So I got ahead of myself. I apologize.
So this just basically is the approval. We've had this second reading. We approved it the last meeting, but this would officially adopt it. Any discussion on that? Is there no way to entertain a motion to adopt it?
No.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is adopted. And we are up to administrators' remarks.
Okay. Would you like to go first on this round?
A lot of what's in there, I kind of talked about already. We're continuing to work with, with Bosse's. Christine Newell's come in and worked with two or three grade levels on the science of reading, which is something the state's really, really pushing, and we want to make sure the staff in the middle school have a good understanding of what that means. My newsletter's in there that has some pictures of some other fun stuff. My newsletter's in there that has some pictures of some other fun stuff, uh-huh, uh-huh, fun. By middle school standards, fun. And the, the other thing I want to talk, just let everybody know, we had two wrestlers qualify. Sunday wasn't yesterday, whatever Sunday was, two days ago, to go forward to the state tournament. Two wrestling wrestlers, and then one of our, our team members from Dalai also qualified. So they'll be going up, I think it's the weekend after this weekend, in March, six and seven.
Six and seven.
Am I jumping way too far with that in the data? Our boys' basketball team's about to be playing the MAC, in the MAC semifinal. When they win, they will play at one o'clock on Saturday at Oxford against Dalai. That's in our girls' team and boys'. Both are looking like they're going to, well, boys definitely will make the sectionals, and the girls as well. I know we have some track runners and throwers and a few of them still going on. I think this last weekend, because of the weather, they didn't get to go and participate. But I know they have quite a few going on here. Is it next week?
Sunday. Yep, Sunday.
They get the long trips though, at times.
Yeah, this, these weekend storms, it'd be nice if they could stop for a little bit here.
No one and I were actually back and forth until like 9:30 or 10:00 the one night, and as soon as they got in, we're like, holy cow. It's not a very relaxing weekend when you have a bus full of students coming back from Ithaca in a freaking blizzard, so.
Yeah, exactly. So it's been quite, quite interesting, but they've done a great job getting it done so kids will lose opportunities. Any questions for Adam? Tony?
Sure. Most of this I've already talked about as well, but our SRO is settling in over at Townsend. Same over here. He did all his assembly with the kids. The kids are very excited to see him and talk to him, and they just want to stop him in the hallway, so things went very well with that. I also would like to give and highlight, our PTA did their first sweetheart dance, and we had over 205 people attend that, so it was pretty amazing. The kids were excited, parents. It was a really good event that we will continue to settle this year, so that was great. Just looking ahead, we do have our 100th Day of School coming up on Wednesday, when we return. So our kids will be dressed up and ready for that. And, oh yes, and then Kindergarten Registration Week is March 3rd through the 7th, so if you have any kindergarteners, please, you know, can register.
Let's put them off for that. Any questions from Melanie? Here ain't none.
Sure. So a couple of things I want to highlight in there. I'll first start talking about the January Regents data. It should be included as a PDF on your report there. You can see our passing percentage for January Regents is 78%. That's actually up a couple of percentage points from last January. You'll see that our sciences performed very well. Global U.S. History, we're our two highest. You can also see some subject areas on there that may not have performed to, you know, where we'd like to see them. But as I said, when I talked about the strategic planning goal, we're already taking a look from this data at what can be done to get those results up higher. Another positive that I'd always like to see is the special education students. That percentage of passing is pretty high on a lot of those exams. So this is nice data to have. You'll get this, I think in the summer, we end up giving it to you after the June, we compare, look at the total school year. Another thing I'll point out is just the prom policy. That process has started, well, really completed, I should say. We did work with the junior class advisor, the junior class officers, reviewed venues based on size, location, class need, things like that. We are going to develop that annual communication, go out the end of every year, soliciting venues from the community, just to make sure we are in complete alignment with that policy, and we'll get that out at the end of this year.
Targeting after June, I think, is what you mentioned?
Yeah.
Before, before the exit, so you don't get to the summer and lose it.
Yeah, not far after the actual prom itself, we want to get it, get it out.
Any questions for her? Okay. Just a reminder for the, who's on the Curriculum Committee? Tammy, Kevin, Nate? So we'll have another meeting of the, that committee coming up, March or April. I would say by the latest, April. And we'll, we'll talk a little bit more about results. We'll talk about electives. We'll talk about textbooks. We'll have anybody come, departments come, or teachers come to talk about textbook selection, all those items. So we still have that committee yet. That'll be coming up. Okay? From my end, I just have one item to add, and that is, if you recall, we, last meeting, we approved a contract for the February 4th meeting. We approved a contract for Grant Rider. I think I mentioned that the grant has, was, I think it's tied to all the federal freezes that are going on right now. It has not started back up. So the grant company has canceled that contract without any work or any dissemination of funds. And we're on hold and monitoring, and if we have another grant that opens up, then we'll reenact and come back for an updated, a new approval of an updated grant application and contract. Alright, so just want to make sure that, to keep you informed on that.
Do they also keep an eye out for opportunities, even if we're not on the contract with them, or they...
They are, they are, yep. Because of our success with them, what I asked them to do, say, because of our success, they're who we'll utilize for the grant. So given that incentive, they're, they're looking. And they're a really, they're really a great group to work with. So hopefully, we're looking in the area, anything really, but especially in the two areas of mental health, social workers, mental health, any mental health, because who knows what we can extend or whatnot, and then the area of school safety and SRO. The same thing. School safety's broad, and so we want anything that can ever catch them, because who knows what we could extend or expand on in those two areas. So we're trying, and hopefully, we'll identify something soon. That's all I got.
Okay, we do have a need for an executive session tonight. For the...
Matters relating to future...
Yes, our matters relating to future employment of a particular person. I was just trying to make sure I had it in there.
Yeah, they're right.
We're not going to be taking any adjectives or adverbs, so before we go into executive, ask who would pre-populate a motion to come back to general session and adjourn. Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. That is carried. And then I need a motion to go into executive session for the matters relating to future employment of particular people. Motion second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
We'll be inviting them.
We are going to be, as a note, we want to invite in our three building principals, please. Okay? And that is carried. We are, I was going to extend the offer to Teresa, if she'd like to. If you'd like to sit and listen to the executive session, you're more than welcome to. Okay? Okay, we are in exec. Thank you.
You can wait till after that, since she's staying.
Say again.
You can wait.
Yeah, yeah.